We will now reconvene the City Council's special meeting. Are there any final actions?
Nothing to report out, Madam Mayor.
Okay, we will now adjourn the City Council's special meeting and call to order the City Council's regular meeting for Tuesday, June 27th. Will the Clerk please call the roll?
Council members Aquino.
Here.
Chalam Charla.
Here.
Kozlowski.
Here.
Rohrbaugh.
Here.
And Rodriguez.
Here. Let us stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any agenda updates?
You have no agenda updates this evening.
Okay, will the Clerk please call the next item?
The next item is Business from the Floor. But you have no request to speak under Business from the Floor tonight.
Okay. All right, will the Clerk please call the next item?
Okay, that takes you to scheduled presentations, and your first scheduled presentation this evening is item number one, Proclamation of the Mayor of the City of Folsom, Proclaiming July as Parks Make Life Better Month. Councilmember Aquino presenting.
Come on up.
Parks Make Life Better. Where is that?
Okay, now is it on?
Yes, you're on.
Okay, let's see who we have here. We have Hannah Hollock. Hannah, are you here? Hannah is a Recreation Specialist with the City. Robert Pareda, is he here? Nope. And then we have the whole Schoonmaker family, Connor, Avery, and Lexi, who are all lifeguards, and their mom Kathy, who is a swim coach at Vista Delago and used to have the Tiger Sharks when my daughter swam. So, Proclamation of the Mayor of the City of Folsom, Proclaiming July 2023 as Parks Make Life Better Month. Whereas parks and recreation are vitally important in providing physical and mental health and wellness through organized and self-directed activities, play, and fitness; and whereas parks and recreation encourages physical activities by providing space for sports, walking trails, swimming pools, and many other activities designed to promote active lifestyles; and whereas parks and recreation increases a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of the local tax base, increased tourism, and the attraction and retention of businesses; and whereas parks and recreation foster social cohesiveness in communities by providing spaces for individuals to come together peacefully and ensuring all have access to park and recreational benefits; and whereas parks and recreation supports human development and endless learning opportunities that foster social, intellectual, physical, and emotional growth in people of all ages and abilities; and whereas parks and recreation sustains and preserves our natural resources by protecting habitats and open space, connecting people to nature, and promoting ecological awareness. Now therefore be it resolved, and on behalf of Mayor Rosario Rodriguez, we hereby do proclaim July 2023 as Parks Make Life Better Month in the City of Folsom, proclaim this 27th day of June 2023.
They know they need to stay for the whole meeting now, right?
Yeah. Thank you. Okay, will the Clerk please call the next item?
Okay, your next item is Scheduled Presentation, item number two. This will be a presentation from Hope Cooperative regarding homeless services in Folsom.
Good evening, councilmembers, Mayor. My name is Erin Johansson, and I'm the CEO at Hope Cooperative, and I am joined by Alexander Sopp, who is the Director of Program Services. And we appreciate the opportunity to talk to you tonight, and we're really here to talk a little bit about what we do as an, I think we have a, there it is. Thank you, sorry. There you go. Is it there? Thank you. I got it.
Oh, sorry.
Thanks. Sorry. Don't touch it. Technical difficulties, not my strong suit. So, Hope Cooperative has been providing mental health-supported housing, substance abuse services, and homeless services for more than 40 years in the greater Sacramento region. Some of you may remember, maybe just you, Mr. Kozlowski, that we also have another permanent-supported housing project here in Folsom that started in 2011, which is Folsom Oaks Apartments at 809 Bidwell. It's a family permanent-supported housing project, and it's very successful. Folks have been stably housed there for the whole 10 years. So, that was our first foray into your community. We serve about 10,000 people throughout the greater region throughout the course of a year in a variety of services and supports. Here in Folsom, we joined together with the Harani Family Foundation, the City of Folsom, and Sacramento Commercial Realtors to work on Bidwell Studios, which was something that I believe that all of you supported as a Home Key Project a couple of years ago. So, in the rest of our services, we serve about 300 people in permanent-supported housing. And in addition, we have about 450 units in the pipeline currently that should be online by mid-2024, early 2025. So, this is a big focus for us. I don't know if any of you had the opportunity to see the Benioff Study that came out from UCSF this last week, but what that study really talked about, about homeless services, is that if we're going to address homelessness, we have to do it in a multitude of ways. Most of us know that already, but their study actually validated that it really is, first and foremost, a housing crisis. So, if we don't get some more housing online, we really don't have a lot of ability to solve for the rest of the issues that people have. Then, of course, mental health challenges come into play, substance abuse issues that co-occurring, often that's a result of untreated mental health, that's also a result of homelessness oftentimes. So, those are all the things that we do. That's what our organization does, is address all of the barriers and root causes of homelessness. So, how do I move? Thank you. So, in September of 2021, we joined together with an MOU with the Harani Family Foundation and Sacramento Commercial Realtors to apply for that Home Key Project, which the project has 25 units, and one is a manager's unit, 20 of them are assigned to us, and we provide both the subsidy as well as the services for those 20 residents. And then four units provide the services, and the clients are sourced through the Heart Group. So, what's really unique about permanent-supported housing for us is that folks have to be eligible in a number of ways. They have to be chronically homeless, they have to be seriously mentally ill, and they have to go through the county assessment process in order to be referred to us. So, that made the whole process kind of unique, Karen Folsom, because we had to really partner with the county to come out and assess folks that were local, as well as some clients that we already had referred to us through Sacramento. So, we have 20 residents living there, we have one full-time personal services coordinator that can also be known as a case manager. They're not a property manager, they're there to provide services and supports to the residents. That means taking them to the grocery store, taking them to their mental health appointments, as well as working on their living skills and other issues that might come up within the property. So, we ensure that all those residents have a tenant-based voucher, and that provides the subsidy. The first tenants moved in in August of 2021, so we're coming up on two years. Six of the first group were Folsom residents, and they are all still living there, so 12 of the original 20 are still living in the property. So, our normal success rate, stability after a year, is a bit higher. But when you have, so we actually are around 90% across the board. But when you have a brand-new property, and you're bringing people directly from the streets, it is sort of a challenge, and it's the first time somebody has lived in housing, so it does take some time. So, I feel pretty good about the 12 out of 20 at the coming up on two years. I also made it pretty clear to everyone, and Elaine will remember this, that it takes about two years to stabilize a property. And I'm really happy to report that we're really close to stability right now. Things are going very well. So, we worked with the Sacramento County and Folsom PD to identify those folks, and now we have a few vacancies, and we're working with them again to identify folks to fill those vacancies. So, are you up? I think you're up. Yeah, so Alex is going to take it from here.
Hi, everyone. I'm Alex Sopp. I'm the Director of Program Services at Hope Cooperative. So, as Erin mentioned, the program that's actually associated to Bidwell Studios is our New Direction Full Service Partnership. So, Full Service Partnership is really a wraparound kind of services to support individuals in the community. Typically, these are individuals that haven't been able to get the support at lower levels of mental health services, either through just a one-on-one therapist or basic case management. So, for our New Direction program, we are seeing our clients at least once a week, sometimes multiple times a week, providing all types of services. We're doing housing retention, we're doing basic rehabilitation stuff of, you know, looking at mental health symptoms, how to interact socially, daily living skills, so particularly in this context at Bidwell, we're in the apartment, we're looking around, hey, how do you go grocery shopping? How do you clean up after yourself, right? We do case management, maybe that means connecting them to a primary care doctor, going to the dentist. We support them with finding substance abuse treatment, mental health therapy, crisis intervention. We do life skills instruction, employment services, we have psychiatrists and nursing staff. And so, all of our services are voluntary. So, that means they might be referred through Sacramento County's access into our program, you might be able to get them housed, and it's their choice of whether they're engaging in the services. And that's where our rapport and relationship building comes really crucial. So, our sites, we try to have this onsite location at Bidwell with the one full-time employee service coordinator there, to provide some of that onsite stuff along with, you know, transportation to other resources at our clinic in Sacramento. So, as Erin talked about too, we have 12 residents that have retained the housing for a full year there, and of these, six of them are Folsom residents. So, working with individuals coming off of homelessness, it is very difficult to find that stabilization. Things that we take for granted of making breakfast, washing our hair, doing our laundry, taking out the trash, these are things that were very low priority while living on the streets. And so, once an individual comes back into housing, re-identifying what their needs are takes time, it's a process. And some of that time, that takes a couple of years to acclimate to. And so, we are working with these residents for stabilization, and so having 12 residents still here within this program is a great success. And the fact that six of them were individuals that were living on Folsom streets is even better for us here. As Erin mentioned, we're currently working with Sacramento County for the few vacancies that we have to refer into our program and hopefully get them housed here. And so, part of this project is also permanent supportive housing using HUD rental subsidies requiring the Housing First modality. So, this is a requirement of it. Once again, services are voluntary when it comes to housing first, and housing is not contingent upon participation or even sobriety. The idea is that we take individuals, get them housed, and then we provide the supports and structure to be able to help them succeed. If we put the limitations on it, then we risk the jeopardy of them just continuing in the cycle. So, Housing First model is exactly what it sounds like, Housing First. So, part of New Direction, chronic homelessness is a requirement for eligibility to enter this program. And then the serious mental illness is also a requirement for this Full Service Partnership aspect. So, when we're looking around and we're seeing individuals maybe living on the street, they have to meet both of these criterias. And typically, that means having multiple attempts at lower levels of service and not having that success before they're referred up into our New Direction program. Folks who are coming directly from the streets with serious mental illness, chronic homelessness, and often co-occurring substance use disorders take a long time to adjust. It could be a year, two years, three years. There are sometimes relapses, back to homelessness, back to housing, and that cycle kind of continues. Our goal is to support them through all of that process. So, if for some reason they lose housing, that doesn't mean the program goes away. We are still there supporting them, working with them, trying to find alternative housing to get them stabilized again. So, moving forward here, successful projects like this require an intense collaboration between property management and the service provider. I'm not sure if this is you or me, but. Okay. This also requires a period of adjustment. So, some of the challenges that we've seen is finding the right onsite person. So, we agreed to have one full-time service coordinator onsite that does case management. Our office location is out off of Howe Avenue in Sacramento. It's kind of isolating for them to be here and not having the psychiatric services, the nursing support all right here. And so, what we've actually done is we've started adding more services here to make sure that this is a successful property. So, we've added an additional half-full-time employee, so typically we have about 60 hours' worth of staff a week here. That includes going into the rooms, working with them, going grocery shopping, working on benefits. We run groups. We even had our co-occurring treatment team coming out here and providing substance use-related groups. And once again, participation in substance use is kind of hard to get that engagement in. People that have been using for a long time might be reticent to actually, hey, maybe this is something I want to give up or work on. And so, we've seen a little bit of tide and flow with that, but as now, we have a pretty successful weekly group going on, and the person who's providing substance use treatments is actually signed on to be our full-time service coordinator onsite there now. So, they already have that rapport established, they have that background, so we're very excited to be able to share that success for not only Folsom, but for the residents there. All right, so, city staff has been very supportive with the team, encouraging level of collaboration. You know, we've all been attending different state trainings on Home Key Projects. This is a federal funding that, you know, we have to follow specific rules, not just our provider size, but property management, city, all of that. So, we've been going through these different trainings, working together. We have weekly meetings between property management and with ourselves, where we talk about any violations, concerns on the property, how can we support? And that's always our goal, how can we support these residents? We do our unit inspections together. We've even, we're able to get rent increases to improve cash flow on the property, to maybe make some adjustments and upgrades and things like that. We have weekly groups scheduled, including the Substance Use Group that I mentioned, Life Skills, and Arts and Crafts Group that's actually provided and paid for a local volunteer here. We have a Tenant Council that meets, and Rehab Groups. Activities and volunteer opportunities have been planned and implemented in collaboration with services and the property management.
Just really quick, the weekly group schedules, those are optional if they want to go, yes, and if they don't?
Yep. They are all optional. We do encourage residents to come and attend, and if they choose not to, okay, we'll try again next week, we'll try again next group. We continue to encourage, and that continual encouragement, that continual showing, we are here supporting, we're not going to deny you services because you didn't engage, actually has higher success rates of getting them to come later on. And so, we continue to provide that encouragement.
And on a weekly basis, what's the percent of the individuals that live there that attend the sessions?
It depends on which group it is, and there's some variation. Right now, we have probably about seven residents that go almost to every group routinely, and then a handful of other ones that cycle in and out. So, it depends on the day of the week, depends also on the group. Sometimes if there's a fun outing, we actually see a lot more than if it's just like, hey, let's all kind of sit around, have social, let's talk about life skills. So, we have those variants as well.
The Arts and Crafts Group that has been provided by the local volunteers actually was a really good intro. Folks, it was such a way for people to have some social time with no pressure. They didn't have to learn anything, they didn't have to do anything except have a little fun. So, that was really a good intro to getting people to participate in some of the other groups as well. So, yeah. So, I do just want to share one success story with you, because it's been a pretty powerful one for me personally and for the rest of my team. So, there was a young man that was pretty well-known to the Folsom Police Department and probably other code enforcement and other folks around, who'd been, grew up here and has been homeless on the street for a pretty long time, and he was young, and had serious mental illness, and was untreated and struggling, the family was struggling, people were having a really hard time, he was in and out of trouble with the police, a really, really nice young man, but still finding himself in a lot of trouble out there in the street. And his family was hopeless. They really were, did not believe that this program could work. They were ready for conservatorship. And when I spoke to the family early on, I said, you know, I have no guarantees, because it's not, it won't work for everyone, and it might not be a straight line, but give us a chance to try at least. He's so young, getting him into conservatorship is going to be hard one, and it's a lifelong problem if you do that. So, anyway, family gave it a shot, but more importantly, he gave it a shot. This young man is doing so well at this point, and it was not a straight line. There were several missteps in the beginning and even potential eviction issues. But now here we are, a year and a half later, he is regularly attending the groups, he's regularly attending appointments with his psychiatrist, he looks much better, and when you see him, you'll see the person that he was before, and it's really, really exciting for us to see that happen, especially for somebody young, because his whole life is in front of him, and now he has a really positive, hopeful outlook, as does his family. So, just wanted you to know that, thanks to all of you, made a real difference in one life, and that's the way we look at it, one person at a time. Anybody else have any questions for us?
I have a.
Go ahead.
You mentioned, and it was in the PowerPoint too, what does a stable property mean to you?
So, a stable property for us is that 90% of the people are successfully housed after one year. And so, what happens is, and what does successfully housed mean? That they're not getting eviction notices, that they're not being a challenge for property management, that they're paying their portion of the rent and on time, that they are contributing to the community. Or not, I mean, they can live there on their own as well, they don't have to participate in anything. But as long as they are not causing any trouble to the rest of the community, and they're living there stably, and 90% of them are doing that, that's what we would call it successful.
And then, you mentioned your success story, you mentioned that it was possible eviction at one point. What does it take to evict somebody?
Yeah.
Or what do they need to do?
Yeah. There's a very specific legal process that a property manager has to go through in order to evict someone. There is a three-day notice, there's a 60-day notice, there's lots of things that the property management has to do. But from our perspective, our job is tenancy sustaining, so we want to prevent eviction at all costs. So, what will happen when the person gets that first three-day notice is our team will work with that person to, you know, the onsite person is like, you know, your housing is in jeopardy, these are the specific things that you have to correct, and we will stay with them to try to correct those as much as possible. And I think when a landlord is first working in this population, the behaviors can be pretty extreme, and they sometimes want to go to eviction pretty quick. And so, it really does take the services side to support that person and property management in making sure that we don't get all the way there.
Then my last question is, you mentioned your success story, he was younger. Do you have an age range, does it go from like 16 to?
They just have to be adults, so it has to be over 18, yes. And I want to also say on the eviction piece, one other thing that we do, this is what we offer, if the person cannot make it in this property, which does happen, our job is to move them out as quickly as we can to another type of housing that might be more appropriate, so that it doesn't go to eviction, because we also don't want the property management or the owner, the landlord, to have that expense and that time commitment. Doesn't always work, because people do have the right to take it all the way to the end. So, if we're not successful, sometimes that happens, but we really try to, if this is not a good fit, let's try a different type of housing for you.
In February of this year, there was an editorial piece in the Sacramento Bee about your home in North Sacramento, and it says, "The 20 men and women who will be living here in separate townhouses have to follow the rules, either work or show they're looking for work, and submit to regular drug and alcohol testing." Assuming this is accurate, what is different about that property compared to ours, and why can't we impose sobriety requirements and work requirements?
So, that program is a sober living house. That is not permanent-supported housing, it's transitional sober living. And it is not funded by HUD, it doesn't have a Housing First requirement, it has a sobriety requirement. It's funded by Sacramento County, so it is part of their suite of substance abuse services. So, when a person goes in there, they agree that they're in there for the purpose of sober living. So, it is a different project style.
And this is a five-year agreement you have with the property here? Is that correct?
I'm not exactly sure what the length of the agreement is, but it can be terminated whenever you like, I mean, it's whenever. But what would happen is, you would have to make up that subsidy some way, so the monthly rent that we are paying for that building would have to come from somewhere else.
Okay, thank you.
I have a couple of questions. So, when it comes to filling the vacancies that you currently have, we have some unhoused members in our community that could probably benefit from Housing First, and so, I remember at the time, the applications, there was a certain percent of individuals from Sacramento County versus those that are from Folsom. For these vacancies, are we able to offer this to individuals that are currently living unhoused in Folsom?
Yes. So, it's a little bit tricky, because you're not allowed by the HUD rules with the HUD vouchers to geographically preference any community. So, it's supposed to be open to, and really use coordinated entry. Home Key requires that you use coordinated entry. But we have been working closely with, because we know that you are out here, not accessible to all the various outreach services that are available in Sacramento, so we have done targeted outreach. And I have actually personally connected Sacramento County Heart Team with Folsom Police Department, and they are currently in process of going out and identifying folks that will qualify for chronically homeless, seriously mentally ill, refer into our program so they can be referred into Bidwell. And we're trying to do that for the three vacancies that we have right now targeting your area.
And, so, I personally have not been a fan of Housing First, because I looked at some statistics, and they weren't very positive. So, but I believe that housing is needed in order for someone to get off the street. So, how do you manage the mental health portion and the addiction and housing, and avoid, attempting to avoid, you know, a neighborhood that could easily become an attraction for drug dealing, you know, calls for service to PD, et cetera, et cetera?
So, it's not easy, and I think the way that you do it is with the staffing, you know, onsite staffing. And in full honesty, we've struggled with that, and that's one of the reasons why your city staff has been really supportive of helping us sort of work through those challenges. But if you have the right staffing onboard, and property management and services are working together to make sure that the folks from the outside that want to bring criminal behavior on to the property are kept out, and then we work with the people that are inside to say, this is your home, and this is what the expectations are, and the rules that you need to follow, and they're not rules like sobriety, but they're rules like affecting the community, the community at large and the community within. And so, that's the challenge, I mean, and that's what we specialize in, and I mean, all the properties that we do are permanent-supported housing, and they're all Housing First, except for the one that is specifically sober living. So, it's definitely a challenge, and one of the reasons why we say it takes a while to stabilize the property is because it's rough in the beginning, it absolutely is. I remember telling Lieutenant Zalaya that the calls for service would go up in the beginning of the property, but ideally, if you do it right, over time, they go down, and they are starting to go down now. So, we are right on that almost two-year point, the calls are starting to go down, and the property is starting to stabilize. We have one property in Sacramento that is, become a sober living property by the wishes of the people who live there, not by the wishes of us, because we don't require it. But the folks that live there have lived there for a long time, and when you bring in a new person who comes in using, there's a lot of pressure, peer pressure from the rest of the community, to engage in services and to stop using, and they put that pressure on each other. So, it does happen over time. I can't guarantee that will happen here, but it is something that does tend to happen in a close and small community like that.
And currently, the services that some of these individuals need, for example, psychiatric help, you know, shopping for food, you know, laundry, services come to them, or do they still have to go downtown to Sacramento to obtain those services?
Psychiatry and therapy, they have to go to our offices, which are in Arden Arcade. But, yeah, but we drive them, we take them there and stuff, and that's what kind of was the issue, is that we had the one full-time person assigned to these 20 people, and their job was to take everybody everywhere, that's typically how it works. And then they weren't onsite enough, so that's why we added the extra halftime person to provide that onsite service.
So, when someone needs to see the psychiatry, they'll get a ride from the location down to Howe Avenue and that?
Correct, yes. And we try to combine them, you know, so that a couple of people can go and to do their appointment on the same day.
At what cost? So, paying for rent, currently right now, Hope Cooperative pays for the rent for these locations?
Through a grant that we have with HUD that we've had since the 90s, so it's a very stable rental subsidy grant, each person, it's a tenant-based. Each person, it's a tenant-based rental assistant voucher. So, if that tenant, after a tenant has lived, has completed their one-year lease, if they want to move somewhere else, they can take it with them. But we have enough of them that we can keep the subsidy in this program.
Thank you. Thank you.
I have one quick question, ma'am.
Sure.
Thank you for the presentation, and thank you for all the explanations you are giving to us. Because once in a while, we hear from the community, you know, that location is becoming more a drugstore, or, and you're explaining that one. At the beginning, it is very tough, and you're trying to prevent the outside influence. That's what, in my mind, what that means, even though you're not saying that, right? That's okay. That's right. You, 12 people were still staying there. It's almost two years. That, in my mind, is a success already, over 50%. What is the next path for these 12 people? Where do they go and at what pace?
So, permanent supported housing is permanent. A person can stay as long as they choose to stay, as long as they haven't broken the rules and the property manager has not told them, "Your lease is not going to get re-upped." So, it's permanent for that. But the other thing is, the person after they've been successfully housed for a year, if they want to go somewhere else, they can certainly do that, and we help them do that. So, we have had people, plenty of people in our New Direction Program that choose to go somewhere else after, you know, they either moved to another apartment that is not like this, where they, it just scattered site housing, where they can just rent an apartment, anybody who would accept their voucher. It works just like Section 8, like a housing choice voucher, that they can take to any apartment that accepts that rent.
Yeah. So, I know, all these, you know, state programs, federal programs, at the end of the day, we want to make them a productive citizen, to be part of our society. I mean, that's the goal.
That's the goal.
That's the goal, right? And mental and all those, it takes a longer time.
Yes.
And substance abuse, probably, we can tighten some of the loose ends. I think that's what you are saying, outside influence, you know, try to stop. Now, you have added another half, full-time employee. I see it, 20 more hours, which is 50% more. What kind of lifting-the-hand kind of programs are going on for those? Let's talk about the 12 people.
Yes. Okay. So, one of the things that is true with a person with a serious mental illness, this is a high-level mental illness, schizophrenia, bipolar disorders with psychotic features, they're pretty serious mental illnesses, and they're generally speaking on SSI. So, many of our clients do not go to work full-time. But that doesn't mean that they can't be contributing members of society. That doesn't mean that they can't do volunteer work, they can't do part-time work. So, those are things that we offer connections to as people become ready for that. So, for example, we operate one other mental health program in the Arden Arcade area as well, that has an employment specialist. And when people here at Bidwell Studios express an interest, we can connect them with that. We can drive them over there, and they can connect with the employment specialist. She has 150 clients on her caseload, which is enormous, and 78 of them are employed. So, she's currently working to find housing, I mean, find employment with them, alongside them, for the other half. But they're actively looking. And then, there's 50% of them who are working. Mostly, they're part-time jobs. Some of them are actually on a career track, most of them are not. But they're all out there doing something, and they're all actively looking. And so, we're really proud of that, that program, and that is offered to these folks as well, should they choose. Even the property owner has talked about some volunteer opportunities that he's aware of here in Folsom, for the folks in Bidwell to participate, and has been talking about it with our staff. So, we're working towards that next step. Volunteering is usually the first step towards trying to do some employment.
Got it. Thank you again. Folsom is big on volunteering. You know, you see it, you know, Community Service Days, you know, we pull 3,000 people under one roof, you know, one day. But, so, if we want to continue that path, I know the city, you know, needs some, and local nonprofits. Is the local resident, what is his name, the person who lives 40 hours?
The person who lives onsite, the manager that lives there?
Manager?
Okay. So, there's a resident, I'm not exactly sure he's a manager, but he's the person who lives onsite to watch the property, that's required. And then, he reports to the property owner. And it's the property owner that was telling me that he had some volunteer activities for these folks. Is that what you're asking me?
It is, I think, very close to. So, if, you know, it's, at the end of the day, we want to bring them out and involve in the community.
Correct.
Bring their, you know, the esteem, yes, they are contributors of this society. I mean, that's the driver, which you are right, you know, right on.
100%.
So, if we have a need of volunteering activities going on, and there are opportunities, sometimes we may take some, you know, extra step to drive there and talk to the resident manager.
Yes, so that would be the case, that, yes, the personal services coordinator, that's who you would talk to. And her name is Nicole, and she's there 40 hours a week. And if she's not there, because she's taking somebody somewhere, the halftime person is Nick. And so, Nick and Nicole, easy to remember. So, if you want to stop by, otherwise, I will leave cards and brochures, and you can just reach out to me with an email that you, and I'll make a connection for you.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you again. At the end of the day, we, you know, since that facility is in Folsom.
Yes.
We want to be part of that lifting the hand and picking them, and whatever the service next they want to, they can go with it.
So appreciate that. Thank you. That's wonderful.
Thank you. And our, sorry, last question. Our perception is, thank you for clarifying, you know, you are a stabilizing time. It's kind of a taking-off airplane. It's still wobbling. I think that's where you are. It takes usually the two years. So, when we talk to residents, we want to be, you know, candid and honest on how you guys are managing. I asked several times, you know, my city manager, "Is that really running?"
Yes.
Right? Is that really running? Is that, you know, 3 million, 4 million, whatever it is, Home Key funds, it's taxpayers' money, is that working? At the end of the day, even two or three or four are coming into the community as a productive and, you know, citizens, right? That's our goal here. But thank you so much, you know, for everything you guys are doing. Mayor, sorry for interrupting.
Just one last question. So, the success of, for somebody with schizophrenia, bipolar, is daily, ensuring that someone is taking their meds daily? Do they have, is that what the onsite, or the manager onsite unit does?
We do not administer medication to anyone in permanent-supported housing. They have to be able to do it themselves. However, what, one of the things that we do encourage, and our psychiatrists encourage, is long-acting injectable medication, which is once a month. Many of our clients are on that, and that is, really makes it easier for them. And they, and they have less of that daily discussion with themselves about whether I really want to do this or not. So, those work a lot better.
And so, just really quick, the young gentleman you're talking about, I know his story, I know his background, I know the impact he had, and he has definitely made a remarkable change to his quality of life and those around him and to his family, so.
Thank you.
That was great to see.
Yeah. Really great.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you so much.
All right. Well, the clerk, please call the next item.
Your next item is scheduled presentation, item number three. This will be the Folsom Tourism and Economic Development Corporation, also known as TED Core Quarterly Report.
Mayor, Mayor, Mr. Council Joe Galiardi, President and CEO of Folsom. It's my pleasure tonight to introduce both Sally Buchanan to talk about what we're doing in tourism on a quarterly basis, and Laura Fickell. And the unique thing about Laura Fickell is, this will be her first rodeo. So, with that, Sally.
Good evening, everybody. Bear with us as we change to our presentation. There you go. Thank you. All right. Good evening, everybody. I'm thrilled to be here again, right before our big weekend rodeo, the first, second, and third. So, I'll be giving you a sneak peek and some updates of what we've been doing since we last saw you, in April, I believe it was. Folsom Pro Rodeo, we are sold out. I think for the first time, Joe reported four or five days in advance. So, we are completely sold out for the weekend, super excited. I was here last time, I reported that we have a new online booking engine. And we featured some amazing rodeo hotel packages this go-around. We had a two-night stay. You get two tickets to the concert, which is on Friday, outside of Lakeside Church, the ride into the music festival, two tickets to rodeo, two paddleboard tickets, if you booked a two-night stay. Our one-night package, you would get two general admission rodeo tickets and two paddleboard tickets. So, super excited to offer those packages this year. And we will see, provide a wrap-up after all is said and done. We also, a little bit further into the presentation, I'm going to talk about our Destination Asset Study. And we received some great statistics from that, and also a new tool we told you about as well, called Zartico. And very interested to see that about 20% of our rodeo participants, or rodeo-goers, come from over 40 miles away. About 46% come from 10 miles away. And the remainder come between, are between 10 and 40 miles away. So, after rodeo, we're going to do a deep dive with our system called Zartico, which will help tell us where they're going, when they come here, where they're stopping before rodeo, where they're stopping after. I do know that In-N-Out was pretty, pretty high on the list, as was Center Street Taqueria in a few things that I saw. So, some very cool statistics that we've been gathering. Very excited to say that hopefully, right after the July 4th weekend, after leases-approved sociology, the coffee shop, which operates out of downtown historic Folsom, will be operating, changing the depot bottom floor into the general store and visitor center. They will be selling great merchandise, rodeo tickets, also some great grab-and-go foods, and making it really a place where visitors can stop and enjoy in everything that Folsom has to offer. So, super excited with that transition. I think we talked to you some time ago about kiosks. We will have our first Visit Folsom kiosk in the depot. It is actually being shipped on the 27th, so it should be right here after 4th of July. Think of an iPad on steroids. It works with our website, and when people come in, they can use it to find information directions to different places. They can also walk back and take a selfie, which is branded Visit Folsom, and email it to themselves. So, excited to see how that goes and hopefully expand locations. Since we last saw you, we've had several events that we have supported that have really brought a lot of economic impact to the area. Up in the right-hand corner, Folsom California Jazz Competition was held the last weekend of April, brought over 350 room nights to historic Folsom, and I'm sure surrounding Folsom, because their parents had to stay somewhere. Over 40, 40 high school ensembles came and competed on different stages throughout historic Folsom. They are, it was by all intents and purposes, amazing Curtis Gazer, who just retired, this is his new nonprofit foundation, already talking about expanding, hopefully adding a stage, perhaps with an element in the Palladio next year, expanding hotel stays, maybe, you know, out towards the Palladio area as well. So, working with them very closely on that. Over, two weekends ago, I think it was now, the mountain bike, Motherlode Epic Mountain Bike Race, over 340 participants. They start up in the foothills somewhere, and they mountain bike, and they stop, they get on the lake, and then they get back on their bikes and end up in historic Folsom. Then, there was a beer garden and a band onstage. The Balance Bike Bash with the little kids and the little course down Center Street, very cute, if you didn't get to see it. We also had the California Community College State Baseball Championships. Folsom Lake College was in the finals, but they didn't quite make it the second year in a row. That brought over 400 room nights. We also, in conjunction with the city, supported Folsom May's Bike Month and Folsom Pedal Quest, as well as there was another Balance Bike Bash for the kids. Pedal Quest featured six different routes that residents and visitors could ride, and there was stops along the way. And also, young ones could participate and get electronic badges, depending upon if they made all the routes. So, super excited about that first-time event. A little bit more, we just had the Lincoln Highway Association Annual Conference. The mayor and I were able to greet them at the Hampton Inn. They brought 124 room nights, and they really fell in love with the city, and many of them stayed a lot longer. And I know they visited, a few visited Center Street Taqueria a couple times. The Capio Annual Meeting, and I think I've covered most of the events. New, coming for this next fiscal year, we will be investing in a tool called Ride GPS. It will be mapping different trails, kind of like Pedal Quest, for our visitors and residents to be able to click on the map, send the route to your phone, and then they can use it, GPS. This is, this can be done for cycling, for walking. I saw a city that used it for paddleboard routes and all different activities where you, you, you know, get around and get some exercise. So, excited to work on that project. And also, you're able to add points of interest along the route, so we could create some fun trails on that. We just finished our first phase of our Destination Asset Study. A group called Hyundai Strategic Partners came to our TED Core Board Meeting a few weeks ago to present the study. They presented about 20 slides to that group, and there were, the report entailed over 120 slides. So, it's very detailed report, and excited about some of the findings. I'm only going to briefly go into a few of the recommendations that they had, and obviously, we're going to be doing more work on this. But our matrix summary, and these are the eight or 10 different areas in which they did really deep dives. Conference and meetings, obviously, I think we all know we're a little bit weak in conference meeting space. Entertainment, we're doing okay. Sports, limited week. I won't read them all. Obviously, we're really strong on our parks, trails, and outdoors, outdoor space. And then, they went on to really detail what kind of hotel room night generation and visitor spending that we have in each of these areas. And they use all of this information to help share how they would suggest we could move forward on different assets, bringing different assets to the area that would help our visitor economy and our community. And this is a summary matrix of the opportunities, and we're strong in many areas, and there are areas in which they suggested that we do a more deeper dive. Conference hotel feasibility, and actually, I should add boutique hotel to that. Activating something in our waterfront area, and also Folsom Ranch activations. So, from there, we will be gathering and coordinating, obviously, there's projects going on already with Central Business District and River District. We will be gathering the city and those working on those projects together to determine what assets do we want to study. What, there's so many that we could do here. Think of a mountain bike park, or a food hall, or the boutique hotel, or a, what do we want to tackle and really do some deeper dives on to find the dollars and cents, and whether or not we can get those projects done? So, lots more work to come on that. So, you'll all be hearing more about that, I'm sure, at our next presentation. And, oh, potential economic impact. A destination amenity, again, think of a food hall or a boutique hotel. These add amenities, not only for a visitor, but for our residents, drives increased visitation, increased TOT tax, increased sales tax, lots of new time jobs, new net earnings, new spending. So, lots of opportunity, depending upon what we decide that we should further study. But definitely provide economic impact to Folsom. Oh, sorry, I have more. I forgot. So, just a couple of slides, talking about data. 25% of our visitors came from the San Francisco, Oakland, San Jose area. This past, this slide is this past 12 months. You can see our top 10 feeder markets here, Seattle Tacoma. This gives us our marketing intelligence on where we could be marketing to. And actually, if you click, click, if you're in the system, you click on that San Francisco, Oakland, San Jose, it drives in and actually tells you what percentage from each of the cities in that area. So really can help drive marketing.
You know, it's really interesting is when I meet people, I say, oh, so what are you doing in town? Or where, so I always want to know, oh, where are you from? Where are you visiting from? It's very interesting because the San Francisco to San Jose area is a draw. Lost San, people from Southern California are a draw and then people that are from up, like the Reno area.
Reno area, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, so it's, it's interesting, yeah.
Next slide tells us a little bit about what our visitors are doing when they come here. And I think it's good, good for all of us to know that nearly 48% of our visitors are experiencing our outdoor recreation, our retail, our food. And the green lines just show you it's a visitor and resident ratio. So the green line under accommodation, you would expect to see that higher than the percentage of visitors who are actually staying overnight because everybody who's staying overnight here is, is not a visitor.
Sally, how do you get that data? I mean, in terms of where somebody's staying, I guess if they're staying at a hotel night, you would know from, if they put their address and they make the reservation or something. But how do you gather that data?
So this data would be gathered by cellphone and, and this is not credit card data, but this is actually cellphone data. So they, they, you know, when you press on your phone that you allow the app to track, it knows where you go and if you've stayed longer than two hours, it knows you're a visitor, you're a visitor and it knows where you sleep at night and where you stay all day. So it's kind of big brother. It doesn't know it's you, Sarah, at all. It knows it's, it's got a ping on a phone and where, where you're coming from. So it's really cool data. I wish I could really go, even go into more of this stuff. But it's, it validates some things that you would think, but it also brings up questions to where you're like, hmm, that doesn't make sense, so how, how do I dive in? But it's been a great tool. This is interesting, 38%, these are our top spend categories, food. If you click into that, it'll tell you restaurant, grocery and how, you know, how the mix is of that. Retail, gas stations, you know, interesting to see health on here, one of our top five. That's going to obviously grow as our medical campuses grow. So that's an interesting statistic and that was just my sneak peek. I do have more data like that and maybe next time I can go a little deeper into some of that. And next, I'm going to turn it over to Laura.
Thanks, Sally.
Unless you have any questions, sorry.
All right, I'll be here. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, council members, staff and community members. I'm Laura Fickel, Economic Development Consultant with Schuhs Folsom. I can't express enough how much tourism and economic development are really colliding and I just, everything that Sally and the team's working on plays so well into what we're doing in economic development. I like to start off by giving just a few numbers. And this is more actually a general aggregation of data that the Chamber Team, the Chamber Tourism and Economic Development Team does for the quarter. This is just quarter. So 112 events, either mostly hosted, some are promoted. 1,500 business owners and community member connections, 15 ribbon cuttings and six pitch night companies. That's just what we tracked, so that it doesn't even count, you know, the, the folks who just joined the events that weren't registered. But it's, it's just really astounding and I like sharing that with the team because they just go, go, go and I send that to them and they go, oh, we really do work a lot. I say, yeah, it's great. And then also to demonstrate that hard work, I've listed out, you know, a number of key events that we've had this quarter. The Women's Investment Forum with a Northern California Innovation District Company, Evolution Accelerator in partnership with Clutch. Clutch approached them with the desire that there are women who have money that would like to learn how to invest. And so they took this on, they had 50 people come to the initial meeting. And I think it really shows that there's this desire for engagement, you know, from women and men, but from women mostly too, from the Clutch ladies that you guys know well, to really start generating some more entrepreneurs, supporting entrepreneurs in this field and, and helping women grow their own wealth. We've did, a lot of you participated in Future Folsom. It was a huge success. We did two busloads of folks and took them around town. And it wasn't just South of 50 New Development, right? We did the entire city. And it was so successful that we ended up getting requests for kind of an encore bus tour with residential real estate agents. And I like to say that, I get laughed at sometimes, but I think, I like to say that real estate agents are unsung marketing army, right? Because they're selling Folsom always. And so it was such a fun task for Shannon and I to do and we took them around town. We did the same route and they were so excited to do that. And they just, they fell even more in love with Folsom once they knew everything that was going on. So that was a really fun event that we did in June with them. The showcase, Business Showcase Mega Mixer, nobody does it like these guys. And they have 45 businesses at the Pilateo, countless attendees, families too, because they made it very family-friendly. Phenomenal event. GSEC Annual Dinner, some of you went and we got to hear Moneta as the keynote speaker, which was really special. And then we have pitched, we've had the pitch nights each month. If everyone, if you don't know, and please follow us on LinkedIn, we're very active there. But the third Thursday Pitch Night has become kind of a grassroots, organic event where people are excited to come and they're coming from all over the region. People, investors are coming to hear these companies that we're attracting, to share their story and share the problem, share about the problem they're solving. You heard from Biconics last time we came. They're, they keep coming, there's a revolving door and it's very, very exciting. We had 25 people attend the last one and even more virtually too. It's a hybrid meeting and I encourage you all to follow us and attend when you can. It's open to the public. It's very fun. We give feedback. There's no solicitation for, for funding. This is just an educational event, but there are connections to be made post-event for anyone that's interested in learning more about the company. The other notable meeting we had recently, city staff has been really wonderful in partnering with, you know, new businesses inquiring about locating in the city. And we've had great meetings about the auto mall. You know, we've got vacant land out there and what can we do to go all in on attracting a really good company to bring sales tax revenue? So we're working on putting a little marketing piece specific to Folsom that the real estate agents will be used to, that can, they can use in their marketing efforts. We've had some really great meetings this week, just at the bottom there, I kind of threw in a few more notable meetings. CMTA, California Manufacturing and Technology Association. Folsom's not really known for manufacturing, but guess what? Semiconductors, we are. And that's a great industry for us and we've got to lean into it and we're happy to work with CMTA and the corridor, like Solid Eye and Rancho, to help bring more visibility to those industries here. Innovate 78 I put on there because if, if anyone doesn't know, Innovate 78 is five cities down in San Diego area along Interstate 78 that joined forces to market, market the corridor. And so we've met with them, heard about their trials and tribulations. They've been in business for eight years now. And so we're, as a 50 corridor, are learning from them. And we have more meetings set up in the future. If anyone would like to hear about that, I'm happy to share more. One other thing we're doing with the 50 Economic Alliance, again, that, just for background, that is Rancho Cordova, Folsom and El Dorado Hills, El Dorado County, and then our respective chambers. We collect data from the 12 ZIP codes, starting at Bradshaw Road, where City of Rancho's boundary is, all the way up to Placerville. Obviously, El Dorado County goes all the way to South Lake Tahoe, but we're really focused on getting workforce data and demographic data from people that are going to really kind of move throughout the corridor to live, work and play. So we've put together four different industry-specific brochures that we share with brokers and GSEC has these. But it really shows the power of our collaborative workforce and life, lifestyle along the corridor. So we did life sciences, aerospace, manufacturing and technology, thank you. There's some overlap in all those, of course, but either way, we can, we can really hone in on whatever industry we're targeting to attract or retain. This is a little deeper dive slide on, into the pitch nights and the companies that are coming through. I mean, these folks are disruptive, if you like the colloquial term, right? We really like them. They're very exciting companies. Onsec Technologies, which just pitched, they are, they have robots that inspect solar fields. This is, there's a lot of challenges and problems they're solving with their technology and they're getting a lot of recognition and funding from outside sources. Sendio is another one. I think that's actually a really good fit for Folsom because they have an app where people can buy, sell and rent outdoor gear. So if you've got a, you know, skis sitting in your garage, you can go on this app and people can rent them when, water skis, sorry, that would be more appropriate here. But, but yes, it's a, it's a very cool app and they are an NCID company. We've been working with them and Phil Scott has a lot to do with all of these. He's, he's a very hard worker. Another thing we're doing is a quarterly economic report. And this is, this is data thanks to city staff, Christine shared this with us. But we wanted to make sure, we're going to push it out to our audience at large. We want to show and demonstrate the growth that Folsom's experiencing relative to the state. So the at-a-glance statistics are state statistics. And we just like to highlight, you know, where Folsom is. They're in the top 10 for growth, for single-family housing. So it's very noteworthy and we wanted to push this out to the audience at large to learn about this stuff. And we will be doing more of these reports as we go, actually. Well, this was the first one, we're working on the second one already. So this should be, this will be going out tomorrow.
Quick question, Sarah, so Laura, not Sarah. What is the basis for those 1,000 people increase in last one year? Where do you collect that information? January 1, 2022, 84,438 people were living in Folsom. And a year after, 85,000. What is the basis for that? Where do you collect that data?
My understanding is from housing data. And I can, and I can check further on where that's coming from, but my understanding is from health. Because it is based on single-family housing.
Yeah, we usually stick to 10 years, 10 years' numbers.
Right, the census.
Census.
Yeah.
So that's why.
Yes, that's very promising, right? Because the census just happened in 2020. So having this really current data was great. It does include prison population as well, about 4,000. But we'll have that as an asterisk in the report when we send it out tomorrow. But it's notable and it's, it's exciting to see the growth.
Got it, thank you.
You're welcome. I just want to share some of the things looking ahead. Phil and I started, we really wanted to engage the, the commercial real estate brokers in Folsom. And then I realized after working in Rancho for so long, I'm reaching out to a lot of the same people. So I said, let's just do, let's do 50 corridor roundtable broker, a broker roundtable. And we've secured the speakeasy, which we've got to get a good location to attract, you know, attendance. And on July 12th, we're hoping about 30 folks are going to show up and we've partnered with the Greater Sacramento Economic Council and CoStar has even sponsored the event. So GSEC's going to go ahead and talk about their pipeline of locates that are potential locates here in the region and let those brokers kind of hear how they could work with GSEC and their local jurisdictions because Rancho and El Dorado Hills will also have representation at the meeting. We are excited with, in partnership with the city and GSEC to announce a globally recognized technology company in the fall. Can't talk about it yet, but it's very exciting. And there was a collaborative effort between us and the city and GSEC to, to really help attract them here. So it's very exciting. We're working with a local, locally grown startup company to find a sizably large footprint here in the office, in the office corridor. So it's very exciting. We have launch, the launch of Project Momentum out of Granite School. We've partnered with the county and we've expressed interest in supporting startups and entrepreneurs out of Granite School, which we're already doing, right? And in technology and all these other sectors. But this ARPA funding really helps us support kind of mainstream businesses. So if they're, you know, a restaurateur or, you know, any kind of mainstream businesses, like you said, that were really impacted by, by the COVID pandemic. There are still a lot of dollars to spend down. So we get to take advantage of those and run a program out of our, out of Granite School to support those folks. But the exciting part about that is you incorporate them with the exciting NCID companies that are already there. And it's just fostering this ecosystem of entrepreneurship and innovation that's very, very exciting. It's, I've heard, it was a while ago, but they said, creating opportunities for collision of innovation. And that's what I think we're really creating there. Site planning and improvements at Granite School, that project I just talked about really feeds into this site improvement. We can't have, we can have a really cool, you know, ecosystem of startups, but we need to have the facilities to, to really, you know, put our best foot forward. So we need the security, we need the mailboxes, we need, you know, just management of the site in general and then just, you know, state-of-the-art facilities in general. And so really excited about the funds that we're going to be able to use to do that. And then industry roundtables. I don't know if you saw on earlier slide, I've met with, Phil and I met with Kyokzia and we've talked to a few others. But we're really identifying what would bring value to a roundtable for this industry-specific meetup. And we're getting very specific feedback, so we can really tailor our agenda to provide something really meaningful for these guys to come together. And honestly, they were like, we don't know who's here. They want to know their supply chain. They want to know their workforce. They want to attract people from the Bay Area too, just like we do. So it's very exciting for them to come together and we will be looking forward to collaborating along the corridor for those two. With that said, I just, I can't say enough about the cultivation of innovation and entrepreneurship that is happening here and that we're really leaning into. You won't see a return on investment right away, but we're spending the time now because it will pay off in dividends in the future. And we're already being seen as a place to come and start a business. That's really important to us, to grow our own jobs. You know, we can attract and retain what we've got, but to grow our own is really special. So thank you for your support in that.
Thank you, Laura. Thank you, Sally and Joe, for the presentation. Okay, your next item is the consent calendar. All right, any items to poll?
Yep, I am going to poll. Number eight. If no one else has it, I can move from four to 12, except eight.
Second.
Will the clerk please call the roll? Councilmembers Aquino.
Yes.
Chalam Cherla.
Yes.
Kozlowski.
Yes.
Borba.
Yes.
And Rodriguez.
Yes.
Okay, item number eight is Resolution Number 11058, a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with Loggers Unlimited Inc. for shaded fuel break creation and ladder fuel removal.
Oh, you, please, I just want to get some clarification, not just for me, even the public as well. You have reached several businesses, sorry, several vendors to bid on it. Thank you and thank you for doing that. I do see somebody bid on the same product for $7 million. I don't know whether they read the RFP right or wrong. My question is more, there is a one bidder, Loggers, 610K and Tailored Trees is 579K. I'm trying to digest, it's again, for everybody's sake. You gave a very generic information how you evaluated. I don't have enough meat there to make that. Why you picked 40,000 more bid there? There may be a reason.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Got some meat here with me tonight, YK. So pretty much when we post requests for proposals for professional services, we define how we score those proposals, just so the people authoring the proposals know how they're going to be scored and just kind of, I call it giving them the answers to the test, right? Letting them know how we're going to evaluate the proposal. So for this specific proposal... So for this specific proposal, we use relevant experience of their staff. So out of 100 points, that was worth 25 points. Project understanding is worth 20 points. Price was worth 25 points. And the ability to complete the work in the allotted amount of time was worth 30 points. And so we came up with this scoring criteria because this work is going to be conducted under a grant that's been allocated to the city through FEMA and CAL-ES. And it has fairly strict time constraints. We have to do quarterly reports showing progress, that we're putting the money to good use, that sort of thing. And so when we were going through the evaluation, I would say, obviously price, but obviously the ability to complete work in the allotted timeframe were probably the two items that would swing in Loggers' favor. Like you said, the next closest was 579,000. Loggers was 610,000. Tailored Tree, good tree company. In our review, they didn't necessarily have the depth of experience in land management. They're more of like a tree company you'd call if you had something you need to prune in your front yard, something like that. The previous contractor we had awarded this to, a similar tree contractor, and they ended up terminating the agreement because they weren't making any money. They didn't, I assume they weren't familiar with the scope. It's very stringent with environmental requirements, so a lot of handwork. You can't use big excavators, masticators, and things like that. So it's all chainsaws and, you know, people dragging that brush out of those areas. So just based on our past experience and also Loggers' response, they scored higher in that category, and that ended up shifting the scoring criteria in their favor. So that's what probably edged them out over the other contractors, or at least over Taylor, who was the next closest in the lowest bid there.
Absolutely. Thank you. And I just want to applaud you for giving them the answer sheet upfront. So you're telling all the bidders, this is how I, as a city of Folsom, is going to score. That way, they can come prepared, you know, whom they're bringing and all those. And thank you for also cross-checking the timeliness of completion, because it is a grant on that one. We don't want to lose. So that's not visible here, you know, apologies for calling. But next time, you know, put that table in.
Do a little more analysis for you next time.
Yeah, just put that table in. It is visible for everybody, and, you know.
Sounds good.
Thank you again for great work. I'll move item eight for approval.
Second.
All right, will the clerk please call the roll? Councilmembers Aquino.
Yes.
Chalam Cherla.
Yes.
Kozlowski.
Yes.
Rorba.
Yes.
And Rodriguez.
Yes.
All right, will the clerk please call the next item? Okay, your final discussion item this evening is new business item number 13. This is consideration of economic development consultant, including the scope of work and goals and direction to staff.
Thank you. Ms. Tmani is going to help me with my slides, which I appreciate. Good evening, everyone. By way of background, this item is a report back from your recent adoption of the fiscal year 2024 budget. Next slide, please. The city council unanimously approved the city manager's proposed fiscal year 2324 budget at its regular meeting on May 23, 2023. The only change made by the city council to the city manager's budget proposal upon adoption was to not transfer $50,000 from the general fund to help replenish the risk management internal services fund, nor transfer $50,000 to create an information technology fund. A consensus of the city council instead requested that up to $100,000 be dedicated to an economic development consultant contract. The city council further requested that the city manager place an item on a future city council agenda to allow the council to provide specificity as to the scope and work and goals for this consultant. Next slide. Economic development means different things to different people, and I suspect it even means different things to the five of you up here on the dais, which is understandable and relatable. So I took the liberty of researching how the California Association for Local Economic Development, commonly referred to as CAL-ED, defines it, specifically in the context of the proper or most beneficial role of local government in economic development. CAL-ED states that, "From a public perspective, local economic development involves the allocation of limited resources, land, labor, capital, and entrepreneurship in a way that has a positive effect on the level of business activity, employment, income distribution patterns, and fiscal solvency. It's a process of deliberate intervention in the normal economic growth by making it easier or more attractive. Today, communities in California are giving attention to what they can do to promote fiscal stability and greater economic development. Economic development is a concerted effort on the part of the responsible governing party in a city or county to influence the direction of private sector investment toward opportunities that can lead to sustained economic growth. Sustained economic growth can provide sufficient incomes for the local labor force, profitable business opportunities for employers, and tax revenues for maintaining an infrastructure to support the continued growth." Next slide. "There is no alternative to private sector investment as the engine for economic growth, but there are many initiatives that you can support to encourage investments where the community feels they are needed the most. It is important to know that economic development is not community development. Community development is a process for making a community a better place to live and work. Economic development is purely and simply the creation of wealth in which community benefits are created. There are only three approaches used to enhance local economic development. They are business retention and expansion, business expansion, and business creation." Next slide, please. "As you well know, the council recently adopted its five-year strategic plan, which included the time period from fiscal year 2023-24, which starts Saturday, through fiscal year 27-28. You, as a council, established four goals. Goal A, financial stability and sustainability, which means supporting fiscal health through long-term planning. Cost control, heightened efficiency, increased revenue, and cost recovery is certainly part of this conversation. Goal C, economic and community development, really applies the most directly to this topic. That goal is centered around promoting the effective use of existing amenities and resources to create future opportunities and enrich the community. I thought I'd take a moment to review with you the strategies you included in that plan to move us toward that goal. I won't read these, but you'll see, you know, everything from the River District Plan to creating a plan for relocating the corporation yard, to establishing a long-term vision for the Y property." Next slide. "Developing a funding and sponsorship plan for the Johnny Cash Art Trail, partnering with Choose Folsom to market Folsom as a premier recreation and competitive sports destination." Next slide, please. "Successful economic development calls for continuing to cultivate a high quality of life within Folsom that supports and strengthens existing businesses, attracts new business, and creates employment opportunity in the community while also ideally enhancing city revenues. Since it is unknown at this time whether dollars set aside for this purpose will be ongoing in future budget years, staff recommends the scope of work for this consultant include what are called SMART goals, which stands for Specific, Measurable, Achievable, Relevant, and Time-Bound Deliverables that are meaningful and helpful to city leadership. And any final scope of work would, of course, be implemented in communication, coordination, and partnership with Choose Folsom." Next slide. "The scope of work could include any combination of the following possibilities, and staff also welcomes input from the city council as to other possibilities. When I first drafted this, I was pretty rigid about just picking very, you know, a very small set of specific deliverables. I ended up expanding it more to just kind of give you a menu of options. Task one would be preparing a three-year economic development plan, and that would really dovetail with your strategic plan that you had just adopted. It would include providing recommendations for business retention and attraction programs specific to our city, including special focus on means and methods to help support our startup business community, ideas for placemaking, special events for our city, a SWOT analysis in the economic development context, strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats, an assessment of key city properties following up on the work that the Ad Hoc Committee has already completed, an assessment of major shopping centers and retail areas within Folsom to understand future opportunities for development and redevelopment possibilities, and suggestions as to how the city could best move forward at the conclusion of the contract in terms of ensuring there's continuity, that there's sufficient in-house or third-party staffing capable to help carry the plan forward. Because the last thing you would want is to invest $100,000 in something, and then that contract is done, and nobody takes the ball and runs with it. So figuring out who's doing what. Task number two, assess development projects presented to the city through an economic development lens and include that information in staff reports to the council. So this would be, you know, similar to what you see today. When you look at staff reports, you're seeing an environmental, you know, considerations. You're seeing financial considerations. You'd also have somebody giving you an economic development set of considerations so that you can consider that as part of your project analysis. The contractor could also provide projected sales tax revenue and other benefits that would be helpful to the city's financial position for a project as well as demographic employment, consumer habit, consumer demand, and market supply profiles and assessments as needed and appropriate. The contractor could also be participating in the master planning processes that are already underway for the River District Master Plan and the Central Business District. Task three would be conducting a regional comparison of the city's fees, taxes, rates, incentives, and processes that most impact the business community to assess our own competitiveness regionally in terms of attracting and retaining quality businesses. Task four, again, this is just a menu, conduct a void analysis to highlight possible businesses to target, to attract to Folsom. These businesses would ideally complement and grow Folsom's existing and emerging industry sectors, including healthcare and technology, which are the most obvious ones here in this city. Avoid analysis would include possible businesses and show their retail class along with the nearest location, appropriate size needed, and estimated sales tax revenue. And I'm talking very specific targets, like names that we would go after. Task number five, develop an e-gift card program to encourage residents to shop locally during the upcoming holiday season, including identifying interested businesses for participation, setting up an online account, creating associated branding and community outreach materials, monitoring sales and usage, and serving as the point of contact for business owners. Interestingly enough, when I was reviewing this list with Mr. Galliardi, he mentioned that's something that Choose Folsom may be already taking on. And if that's the case, we would either just provide support or, you know, whatever is most helpful to Choose Folsom. But I think it's an important concept in terms of an idea to possibly pursue. And then task number six is to provide third-party economic development staffing services to support the city of Folsom in this critical area. Basically, this would include this person serving as a primary point of contact for the city on economic development, providing concierge services for new businesses, business expansion, reuse possibilities, and/or development opportunities, creating customized marketing materials, and facilitating the completion of key tasks identified in the Economic Development Action Plan. Next slide. And finally, my recommendation is the city council provide direction to me and my staff as to the scope of work and goals sought for the Economic Development Consultant Contract included as part of the approved fiscal year 2324 budget. And final slide, I'm very happy at this point to take any questions or receive any feedback or direction.
I have some questions.
Yeah.
On number one.
Task one.
It says three-year strategic plan, but it was a five-year strategic plan.
Yeah, that's a typo in the.
Oh, okay, good, all right.
I caught that as I was preparing the presentation.
That's good, okay.
The staff report says three-year. You passed a five-year strategic plan.
On number two, would this position be a liaison to the development community? Like real estate brokers, developers, et cetera?
It certainly could be, and we want to be careful not to call it a position because it would be a contractor. But I think it would, it's certainly at the council's discretion. I do think we want to be sure that we are connecting staff with developers as well. And I think we want to pick and choose carefully who we're putting out forward. I'm not, I'm not sure that I always would want a contractor interacting with developers or interacting with a major corporation that's seeking to come here. But I certainly would like the input of the contractor as to, you know, how to help us make that connection. Does that make sense?
So just to visualize this, so an economic development consultant is somebody who has expert knowledge of economic development. And so my only concern about that is that if you have staff level now doing sort of economic development characteristic job duties, then is there going to be an effectiveness? And so while this position may be a contract for one year, I mean, ideally, the hopes is that this position will eventually evolve into something down the road that can be beneficial to the city. So that's just one area that I was a little concerned about with number two.
Appreciate that, yeah.
Number five.
Yes.
The e-card one. So I kind of saw that as, we have bigger fish to fry than to have a consultant spend time developing sort of an e-gift card. And I personally saw that as a chamber of commerce.
Yeah, that's fine, yeah.
Function. That's just my personal view.
In other jurisdictions, you know, the city has taken the lead on it. These are, again, these are suggestions. This is not a list of the contractor does all of this. It's just things for the council to consider.
Yeah, actually, at the end, I was going to say that there needs to be a last bullet that adds, "And other duties as assigned," which are.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, the big one request for me is that when we were doing, when we were doing the property ad hoc committee, Councilmember Aquino had brought up identifying economic opportunity zones throughout the city that would identify opportunities throughout the city that we, as a council, can identify economic development projects and identify some key ones to accomplish sooner rather than later. And so when there's been discussions of these economic zones, I think it would be incredibly beneficial to us to be able to identify those and prioritize where are we going to get some of the biggest bang for our buck now as opposed to later.
I like that, yeah.
Yeah. What was, let me see. And then, of course, the last bullet, "Add other duties as assigned that are juicy." Those are my comments.
We all have that on our job descriptions, and we would welcome adding that to the contractor's job description.
Other duties as accepted. I have one quick comment, Elaine, and you already mentioned that. You know, 30 minutes, our Chamber Choose Folsom friends has given the presentations, and quite a bit of the stuff, you know, Laura was mentioning is on the similar subject. We both are in Folsom, and we have a Folsom's best interest. It's not the city government. It is not the Choose Folsom. Choose Folsom is a nonprofit organization. Some of the funding is coming through the TOT tax. You know, it's somewhat indirectly a residence paid or, you know, somebody visiting. So I know you mentioned that. I really, really want this person closely working with the Choose Folsom.
Absolutely.
And absolutely taking, you know, some, we have our boundaries where we can do, you know, a little bit, you know, more effectively based on the power of city, and the same time, you know, they do nonprofit based on that power. I really, really want this person and $100,000 spending is effectively, you know, collaborated and delivered.
Absolutely, and I don't see how it could be successful otherwise, yeah.
Yeah.
Really quick, Elaine, there was a couple of questions that I just want to ask. Will this position report to you?
Yes.
Okay, good. And then what will be the process to get the consultant under contract?
So depending on what kind of direction I get tonight, like, for example, do you want to spend the $100,000 all in one contractor? What, you know, what are the primary tasks you're looking for? If it's over my signing authority, which lands, you know, somewhere in the 70,000s-ish, then I would do an RFP process and come back to you, and you need to approve that. If you whittle down to, you know, we really just want to focus on these two things, and it's within my signing authority, then I will initiate that process and pick a consultant and move forward. So, you know, either way, I just need direction as to how big you want this thing to be. You know, do you want to kind of phase in, or do you want to just go for it all with, you know, the full $100,000 right away? I'm just looking for that type of feedback, and then I can come back to you.
When I, when I first requested this, what am I envisioning of this position? Is that we go head-on, full. Get a person, get a man, get a plan going. I think the, sort of like the continuity of care things, where if you hire somebody, you don't want to have, you don't want to have bits and pieces out. I think this position needs to work aggressively and move forward fast. Just my personal feedback. And then also, if I had a preference, I would really want this person to have regional knowledge of Sacramento County, the city of Folsom, and just have an understanding so that there's not a learned ramp-up period, but as opposed to someone that knows our area and the industry well. But my personal opinion, I would like to put it all into one person and get a plan going and get an action plan for the next.
Appreciate that, thank you. That's really helpful.
Could I just get clarification? Correct me if I'm wrong, but we are talking about, at this point, a one-time expenditure for an economic development plan. We are not hiring an economic development director at this time. This is not an ongoing expense.
No, we did not add a position and could not add a position to the budget for an in-house person. So what I understood the direction to be was that $100,000 that I had suggested we use for other purposes be used instead for an outside contractor who would cost up to $100,000. So it's one time.
That is my understanding. What you're saying right now is my understanding. But eventually, I hope that, I hope that this position will be able to generate some of the revenue that we need. Because when we look at our strategic plan and we identify those five priorities, that, they all require money. So eventually, it would be beneficial to us as a city to be able to start with $100,000, get the position going, and then sort of evaluate. get the position going, and then sort of evaluate in about six months, where are we in terms of generating revenue? And I know that a lot of this is going to be coming a year, year and a half down the road, but at least if there's a plan. I would personally ideally, at the next budget, evaluate whether an economic development director would be beneficial to the city. But this will be able to tell us a lot if they can get the ground we're going. So I have some.
A quick one. Mayor, I think you're making a great point. I just want to make sure the smart goals we are attaching to this consultant, the output. So we will see those, and that will give us some good promising idea by implementing that, we are going to generate more revenue. Is that right?
That's the, that's the idea, is that we want to focus them on activities that literally, that increase our revenues, you know, that, to me, is the city's position. Now, Stacy, maybe you could forward one more slide that I just added, just to, just as a reminder from the budget presentation, is please remember that, you know, these are our top 25 sales tax generators, and they together generate $13 million annually in sales tax revenue. And so to start getting into significant dollars, you have to not only replicate, replicate this list or something very close to it, and you need to get people to shop equally at those and equally at the second set. So I just, I just want to, you know, put some proper cautionary boundaries there that we should not be expecting that hundreds of thousands of dollars are going to start just pouring in because this person is at work.
I, I agree, but we also have a commercial area, at the Folsom Plan area, that this economic development consultant can, can start letting us know with the spaces that we have available, are there any, you know, similar type of businesses that we can attract that could generate some of that sales tax for us?
Yeah, that's what I was mentioning, is, you know, kind of capitalizing on the industries that we know we've become kind of a hub for, whether it's technology or healthcare or healthcare tech, and start, you know, asking that consultant to say what pegs naturally with those that would bring in sales tax that aren't, you know, and that's, the second piece is very important.
So I have a couple additions. The first one is I would like to have this person work with Parks and Rec in regards to our strategic plan, our, one of our top five priorities was the Johnny Cash Trail.
Yes.
So identify funding sources, obviously fundraising is one of them, city is one of them, and beyond, much like we just got with the state to do our second pick, but, and how we can better work together to make sure that that happens.
Yes.
That speaks to the quality of life when you described economic development. The second one is south of 50, there's still a lot of development that needs to happen there, specifically with the oak groves and all the nature down there. How are we going to maximize that without going into details with different experiences around the state and in, up in Washington where I'm from? There's things I think that we could do to attract up people regionally, and it could be trails, obviously, we saw with the description and the data that you guys brought, TedCorp brought, outdoor activities, outdoor locations was a huge draw to get people into Folsom, so I think that was huge. Doesn't mean that's going to cause revenue directly, but it's going to get people, you know, in Folsom, spending money. And it could be lots of things, so I won't even go into like ideas, but that's something I would want them to look at, maybe even starting a master plan for that south of 50, like the Oak Grove area.
Yeah, and just want to, Stacy, maybe you could back up to slide, oh goodness, slide number five. I did go through kind of listing the basic strategies that the city council identified in its master plan under community and economic development, and many of those, including the Johnny Cash Art Trail, are included in here, and they're also included in the two-year priorities the council identified. So you've already done really good work and the kinds of things you're mentioning that we can build on.
Yeah, so making sure that that's a directive of the economic development consultant. And then I don't know how you're going to go about hiring this person, but I would like to see, since this was council-driven, I'd like to see two council members on the panel in the, for hiring.
For picking.
For picking.
Can we just clarify that we're not hiring a person, we're hiring a vendor. It may be multiple people that work for that vendor, it's a contractor doing a scope of work we're trying to discuss and establish here, just for clarity's sake. It's not, it's not a person per se.
I think we're using the terminology, but I think we're all in agreement, it's a consultant. Yeah, maybe just word choice we're using, yeah.
One of the things that I would be interested in knowing from this person is what sort of things could be done in-house with existing staff in this council, and what needs additional support? So, for example, I think there are some things that the city could be doing right now in terms of business retention. So I personally am in the process of reaching out to every business owner in the 3rd District. Now, the 3rd District is very residential-heavy, and I fully get that, I have fewer businesses in my district than any of you. But there are a good 30 or 40, I've been reaching out to all of them. Laura came with me on a meeting where I reached out to the commercial real estate agent who markets the McCooney development and the In-N-Out, and just, you know, kind of talked to him about what he's seen in the market, what could Folsom be doing to help attract, you know, fill some of these vacancies. One of the things that came out of it was that property owner was able to put, you know, the forum on file with the police department that allows PD to go in and enforce people for trespassing and that sort of thing. So just reaching out to property owners and saying, "Thank you for doing business in Folsom, I represent the 3rd District, feel free to use me as a resource, feel free to contact me if you have any issues with the city." I think we could all be doing that, but for sure, we ought to be reaching out to those top 25 sales tax producers probably once a quarter. And it should probably start with the mayor and the city manager, but from there, maybe they want to meet with the fire chief or the police chief or the community development director, whatever. Those are some things right now that we could be doing as part of a business retention effort that does not take a consultant, that doesn't take a new position, we just need to do it.
I do that, I mean, I patronize, all the business that I do, with the exception of Restaurant Depot, is done in the city of Folsom. And I really do get a kick out of talking to business owners about what they enjoy, what's working well, what can we do better? So I just happen to talk to all of them throughout the city, not specific to any.
Right, I, I know, and I think we all do that to a certain level, but I'm just saying a kind of a more organized, systematic approach. The other thing, you know, you mentioned Sally and Laura, the conversations that are happening around the vacant spot at the auto mall, and I think that's fantastic. But, but this council in the, in the city could also identify, you know, five to 10 properties in the city that are vacant or soon to be vacant. And the two that come to my mind right now are the former Denny's, and it was, what was it, Woody's before that, or Red Robin or whatever?
Yeah.
And then, you know, the, whether, I don't know if it's vacant now or going to be, but the former Bed Bath &amp; Beyond. But, you know, in terms of the, the former Denny's, you know, perhaps a call from somebody in the Community Development Department to that commercial property agent to say, "Hey, we know you're trying to fill this space, it's also important to us, we want to let you know, we've got federal funding to add sidewalks down Riley Street. We've got an effort to revitalize the central business district, and we'd love to have your help on that. We've got St. Anton that's going to develop." Just kind of let them know what's happening around them, information that they may be able to use when talking to, you know, to potential tenants. So my point, again, is just, I would like to know from the consultant, here are some little things that you, you could be doing, and you don't need to have, you know, some, you know, highly-paid executive to do it for you, you could do it with your existing staff and with city council members.
Yeah, and I, I think that's why I was really intrigued by your economic zones. Like, I think that is a, I, I really like that. I like to look at what are the opportunities in the different districts that we have? As far as that building goes, Joe and I, right after the Purple Place lost their lease in Eldorado Hills, Joe and I met with the owners of it, and we were trying really hard to try to find them a place in Folsom, and it was an ABC license crossover that wasn't going to work for them, but I thought we did a pretty good job of trying to get them to do, to come to Folsom to do business, but, so anyways, but going back to your, I, I love the idea of looking at economic zones and looking at opportunities throughout the city that we could be a little more proactive in trying to help Choose Folsom recruit some good businesses, yeah.
Anyone else?
Good.
Anything that, you know, I've heard what you added on, is there anything on that list? I mean, we take, we can take off the e-gift card program, it sounds like Choose Folsom's focusing on that anyway. Was there anything among the tasks that just, you were like, ugh, don't do that, or?
I thought it was very well-written and well-laid out. I think it covered a lot of important pieces in regards to economic development. So I, I, I thought you guys did a really good job of laying out, you know.
Can, can I actually, on this one? Task number two, it feels to me like the, the job for a consultant would be to create a process for doing task number two, not necessarily to do task number two.
Okay.
So how to actually have a concerted economic development lens.
Like a template of the kinds of things you should be looking for and including.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, that's valid.
Yes, thank you.
And then, obviously, number six, I mean, that may be something that a future economic development director could do, but that's not going to be in the scope of what the consultant is doing in a one-time thing, right?
Yeah, I mean, this just kept coming up, and honestly, in my draft, I kept putting it in and taking it out, putting it in, taking it out, because I was really trying to focus on one-time expenditures, and like I said, I didn't want anything where it would just be like, would just fall off a cliff at the end of a contract. But that said, it keeps bubbling up from this dais, from other sources of like, who's your point person? And then we say, well, we have, you know, probably three or four people on the staff that are helping, but it's like, who's, who's the one person someone can contact? And we don't have a dedicated staff person, so that's the only reason that this is on here, it doesn't have to be on here, but I just didn't want to ignore what I've heard.
And I think that while it may be something that an economic development director could do at some point, I think to really get that started is really key. I mean, I, I got a call this last week from a local business owner that wants to expand his property, and he didn't know how to do it. And, and so he, he, he knows me because we're both business owners, but he, he didn't know where to start. And so then it was, okay, let's, you know, and I think I forwarded the email to, to you, and, but I think people just don't know where to start. They want to expand, and he's got land on his property that he could do something better. So I think when it comes to if and when he expands, he's going to want to do it quick because he's going to want to get open quicker. And so I think that, I think that's a really key part of, of economic development and getting people up and going as soon as possible.
That, that sort of, could you think of it, again, in this instance, of developing some scopes of work or job type, job descriptions that would fill that, you know, role of sherpa or ombudsman or, you know, docent?
Concierge, yeah.
That would kind of be that, ultimately be somebody that we would hire down the road to be that intermediary or guide.
Yeah.
But in this context, part of the scope of work could be to develop those.
Yeah.
Those work.
Yeah, we can certainly develop this, I think we know what those scopes of work are, we just don't have the luxury of having to be able to dedicate people full-time to them. I mean, in the old days, we used to have sort of an expediter-type position in the Community Development Department, for example, that would, you know, move things through, you know, the processes as quickly as possible. In my early days with the city, I was, you know, serving in kind of a concierge role, you know, I was just sort of thrown on that, and I did that about half of my time when I first got here 18 years ago or whatever, you know. You know, I think we know where the gaps are, it's just that everyone's running so fast, you know, it's, it's hard to, hard to add those on. So that's why number six appeared on the list.
Gotcha, thank you.
And, and there's also internal, I mean, internal, the reality is, there are internal challenges with shortages of staff.
Yeah.
You know, positions that people that are retiring and, I mean, knowledge they're taking, so it is, it, it's, I think this is where this comes in, is to help meanwhile we transition into, you know, hiring staff and getting them up and going.
I, I just, just because this kind of comes up about this person could, you know, possibly pay their own salary and that sort of thing, Stacy can correct my math if I'm wrong, but a business that comes to Folsom that generates $25 million in sales, they do $25 million in sales a year, that results in $250,000 in sales tax revenue for us.
That's correct.
So a business that does $25 million in sales is in our top 20 sales tax producers. So, and obviously, not only, you know, looking at this position, but more police officers and a training chief for the fire department and all that kind of stuff. So I just, I just think it's important to, to think of that context. It takes a lot of money in sales for one business to generate $250,000 in sales tax revenue for this city.
Yeah, and that's what I was trying to point out with just harkening back to that slide from the budget presentation, not trying to be negative, but trying to be realistic about expectations in terms of dollars that will really, really emerge from this position. I think it's a really important thing to do, but we need to not get too carried away with it, you know, the, the kinds of results it's going to provide financially.
But it is progress, and that's, I think, ideally where we want to head is progress. We want to be able, I mean, if we can generate revenue from some of the land that we have that we don't use, or parks that will never get completed, I think at this point, we need to look at bringing in that, bringing in that money, so.
All right. Anything else I can help with, or anything else you want to hear? Okay, and you want to, you're, there's a consensus that you want it to be near, you know, basically spending the entire $100,000, and so be over my spending authority and would come back to you?
On, after you pick somebody?
Yeah, no, you'd have to, you'd have to approve, yeah.
Right, before you offered a contract.
Yeah, because it's out of my signing authority.
Right.
Okay, all right, okay. Thank you, I appreciate the guidance.
Thank you. All right, will the clerk please call the next item?
Your next item is council requests for future agenda items.
Thank you, Stacy.
No requests for future council items, we can move on to city manager reports.
Thank you, Krista. The city of Folsom will break ground on Prospector Park and Fire Station 34 to highly-anticipated projects in Folsom Ranch. The community is encouraged to attend ceremonies and festivities Thursday, June 29th, to celebrate the milestones. A groundbreaking celebration will begin at 9:00 a.m. at the Future Prospector site on Thursday at 4578 Sparrow Drive. Immediately following the ceremony, the Folsom Fire Department will lead a community walk ride to the Future Fire Station 34 site. Casual clothing is encouraged, enclosed toe shoes are required as both construction sites, at both construction sites for safety reasons. We have a sinkhole. All westbound lanes on Greenback Lane from Black Miners Bar to American River Canyon Drive are, will be closed for an emergency road repair. Westbound Greenback Lane traffic, it will be shifted into the eastbound lanes at Black Miners Bar. Motorists traveling in the area can expect delays and are encouraged to find an alternate route. All left turns will be restricted at American River Canyon Drive. National Night Out will be celebrated throughout Folsom and around the nation on Tuesday, August 1st. It may look like a whole lot of potlucks and ice cream socials, and it sure is, and I'm in, but National Night Out events really bring neighbors and first responders together to help bring about a safer community. Neighbors hosting celebrations are encouraged to register their National Night Out event by July 17th at folsom.ca.us/polic. And for more information, you can reach out to Police Volunteer Coordinator Jessica Hess at 461-6516. A traffic safety improvement project at Folsom Lake Crossing and East Nataoma Street is underway. The project is designed to improve safety, reduce accidents and fatalities, increase mobility. This July, crews will install over 2,000 feet of metal beam median barriers, radar speed, fight feedback signs, and updated pavement markers and signage. And finally, have you ever wondered what you would do in a disaster? Are you interested in learning how to help yourself, your family, and your neighbors in the immediate aftermath? Would you like to know more about volunteer opportunities with the Folsom Fire Department? The city of Folsom Community Emergency Response Team, CERT, will hold its Fall 2023 CERT Basic Academy beginning in late August. The course is offered free of charge and preferences given to those who live or work in Folsom. All classes are held from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. at Fire Station 35, which is at 535 Glenn Drive. And you can learn more by emailing folsom@folsomsrt.org or emailing contact@folsomsrt.org. And last but not least, the most important announcement I have is happiest of birthdays to Councilmember Chalum Cherla.
Oh, thank you.
Today?
Today.
29 again.
Today. Thank you.
Anna, or Councilmember Roberta?
That's fine. Happy birthday, YK, I did not know that. Today, for like four or five.
Today, for like four or five hours we've been together. So I have several things. First, I want to say thank you to, I almost called you council member, city manager Elaine and I, I reached out to her to have, well, I had a drink, but it was happy hour, just to kind of flesh out how to communicate better with each other and move forward. And I think it was a very productive and good, good meeting, so I do appreciate you saying yes, and then. And then the second thing is, I want to say thank you to Mike Grunberg, Officer Mike Grunberg, and the F, the Folsom Police Association. It really showed how much they cared to have everyone show, or a lot of people show up last meeting and really talk about the truth of what they deal with in their daily jobs. So I do want to say thank you and to everyone else that showed up. One of the most fun things I've got to do so far as a council member is not necessarily ride in the parade, even though that was really fun with a 1968 Mustang, but really came away from the parade with so much joy and happiness for Folsom. Everyone was so happy, it was a beautiful day, it was incredibly patriotic, and to have everyone kind of just getting along, being so joyful, the kids playing, eating lollipops, like, it was just a beautiful event, and that you could tell the energy in, at least in Historic District after the event was over, was just so positive. I wish we could do that every weekend, except this would hurt after a while. And then personally, my son just graduated a week ago from college and moved out of state and started his real job on Monday, so incredibly proud of him, and that was just a big monumental thing in our family's life, so.
Congratulations.
Vice Mayor Chalum Cherla?
Happy birthday, YK. Thank you. I'm just going to echo what Anna said about the Historic District Parade, you know, thanks to the, you know, Historic Districts and the Commercial Zone Organization for hosting, and, you know, rodeo is coming in two days. You know, I love to, you know, see all these active events going on, and, you know, people call me whenever I go outside, and what's going on this weekend in Folsom? You know, that's what we want to hear, you know, I want them to come here and make our businesses happy, it's important, of course, give a 7.75 cent sales tax also. Good. And also, Juneteenth, we had a, a, a week and a half ago in Black Miners Bar, it's its second year, it is slowly growing. I know Black Miners Bar is in Folsom, we have, our city has a lot of relationship with, you know, African-American community, and we were celebrating, mayor was there giving a proclamation, and they met with our city manager and city staff, this is awesome, this is growing. And also SACRT announced that day, a free RT to Folsom, and they put even a shuttle service to transport from Folsom parking lot to the Black Miners Bar, that way, don't have to pay the $10 parking entry fee, entry fee at the state parks, that's a great event. And last but not least, you know, I got an opportunity to go and meet 75 interns from Folsom High Schools through the career technical education, you know, Vista was organizing that event, but they're all from different, different schools. And Folsom City has an intern, and it's awesome to speak about that intern as well, and some of the organizations, they were taking 10, 15 interns. They're trying to, you know, influence the kids to think some innovative ways and, you know, start working and see the government. Some was working for a state as an interns and city. It's important for our young generation to understand how government works, besides how Android and, you know, Facebooks and all those works, they all work perfect because they're making billions of dollars. But we want people to look towards the government and the civic engagement, those things. I was impressed, and I was giving more talk on, next year, try more, see whether we can find more internships in our city and state level. With that, thank you again, and good night, Folsom.
Okay. Councilmember Aquino?
So I just got back from vacation, I spent 10 days in Alaska, and when I'm on vacation, I'm always on the lookout for things that are, you know, kind of neat and clever, and maybe something that we could replicate here in Folsom. So two things that I wanted to share, when I was in Juneau, I was on a cruise, and so we got off the cruise ship and we walked to see the governor's mansion, and on the way there, they had some signs that said, you know, the governor's mansion is a three-minute walk, and if there were stairs involved, they had a little stair icon, and they, so they just had different, you know, yeah, yeah, but just kind of clever. And so I always think about our Historic District parking garage and how, you know, people, you know, they don't want to park in the garage and then walk up to the 600 block because they think it's so far, but maybe some sort of clever signage like that that says, you know, the amphitheater is a one-minute walk, and the, you know, the 600 block is a three-minute walk or whatever.
I like that, yeah.
So I'll, I'll send you the pic and also to Judy Collinsworth. And then secondly, our cruise ended in Vancouver, and I had never been there before, it's a fantastic city, and I'm planning to go back in the near future, but we were able to rent bikes and wa, ride along the seawall. It's just a very flat trail that goes, it's about 13, 14 kilometers, something like that. But what was kind of interesting is that they have the trails separated, there's a trail for cyclists and one for pedestrians. And I don't know that there's any place in the city that we need that right now, but maybe as we're thinking about the River District, I mean, it's kind of clever and certainly, I think, makes it safer for pedestrians that they're not having to, to deal with the cyclist. So happy birthday to the vice mayor, and then I would ask that we adjourn in memory of former city council member Lindsay Goodell, who served the city as did his father, and his son Steve works for us, so. In, in memory of former council member Lindsay Goodell, thank you.
Councilmember Kozowski.
Okay, if anybody was at the blueprint presentation two Fridays ago, or a Friday and a half ago, there were about 650 people from around the region, lots of elected officials from other cities and people that work in similar capacity to, to, to Mark Rackavan. And the topic of discussion was how to integrate all of the planning that we do into one gigantic guiding set of, of plans so that our trails interconnect across our city borders and our road funding gets distributed in a sensible way. So I am just offering, since I sit on Secog, and that blueprint will be the talk of, topic of discussion for likely the next two years. If anybody has any feedback from that presentation, I'd be delighted if you gave me a call, or any of you grabbed me on the street if you see me. So that, that offer is open. The overlay pavement on East Natomah is much quieter as predicted, because I can tell you with absolute certainty, because I live near there and can hear less traffic noise, believe it or not, because I was paying attention to it. The shuttle program that the Historic District, or the Folsom Historic District Association has been running for a while, it has been also gathering interesting trip data, and we're having a meeting next week to discuss some of the findings of that, kind of where people are coming to and going from most frequently, which in the light of this economic development discussion we had tonight, might be useful information to populate some strategies going forward. My wife and I randomly drove to Calistoga this weekend without intending to go to Calistoga. I only meant to show off a project I worked on once upon a time in, in Espardo, but if you drive down the road that is a straight line between Woodland and Espardo across Yolo County, there's a spectacular new traffic circle there, so.
Hey!
Looking for interesting things, I found that for you, just west of Highway 55, at a, a very high-traffic spot in those farm roads. And then last thing, I will be uncapping and handing out cold beverages in hospitality area at the rodeo all weekend, please come get one from me, thank you.
All right, so with me, I have, summer concerts are on full swing, these organizations work very hard to bring a vibrant arts and culture to our community, so go support them. If you have not had a chance to tour the Heart of Folsom, which was a project from the Folsom Chamber of Commerce Leadership Class of '23, you must, they are pretty phenomenal and very creative. I always, you know, I think people always post when they go to San Francisco and they take photos in front of the heart, so I know that they are, they can be popular, and they're so artistic and create, they're, they're beautiful, the, all the artists that worked on them did a really great job. Mark, are you down to three days?
July.
Oh, July.
No.
Oh, July.
No, he is not.
Oh, I had it on my calendar, and I, okay, all right, so, July. And then I would like to have the staff bring back the River District ad hoc resolution to add the Shingle Springs Band of Miwok Indians to the Citizens Advisory Committee, we had an oversight that needs to be corrected before the first meeting, and...
Can do that, no problem.
Mm-hmm. And let me see, yep, rodeo, I'm excited about rodeo. This is my fifth year doing the mutton bustin', so those kids are so cute, when they get on, they fall and they cry, and then they get up and there's, you know, so tough. And, okay, so we will close this meeting in memory of Lindsay Goodell at 8:33.